This, of course, like all of our meetings, or almost every one of our meetings, is open to the public and we're delighted to have you. We hope everybody will have some lunch. This is a work session, it's not a public hearing. So, if time permits, we may ask for audience input. But it is not a public meeting, public hearing, or public meeting that requires input. So, we are not scheduled to have it. Having said that, we want to hear your input after this meeting, and tomorrow, and the next day, and the next day, until we can say that Lou's Hickory has been finished. This is going to be a very long time. We do want your input, your questions, your thoughts, the things you agree on, the things you disagree on. I will warn you that this is going to be our inspiring spaces. It's not going to be mine, it's not going to be Mr. Berry's, it's not going to be Dave's, etc. It's going to be our inspiring spaces, and there will be pieces of it that you'd say, "I don't think I'd have done that." And that's just the way it's going to be, because we're going to have dozens, if not hundreds, of projects. Thank you for being here. I really appreciate the interest that's shown by those of you who attend this meeting. And we'll get started.
Thanks, Mayor. What we want to do first, just give you a quick outline of the agenda we put together for you all today, is going to have Mr. Wood kind of give you an overview of all the next steps in the bond process. And then he's also going to share with you with Mike Woods' help, Socrata, the software service that we've licensed to put all the financial information out there, and just kind of help everybody see how that works. After that, we'll have Andrea spend some time talking about broad community engagement, again, another software service that we've been looking at, and just kind of discuss how that works, how other communities are using that. After Andrea does that, I've got a little handout that kind of captures the thoughts that staff has had about the citizen committee, and thought we could work through that together to give you all a kind of, as a starting point for your discussion about, you know, the structure of the committee, and you start getting into kind of all the details there. So with that, Lauren, we're going to turn it over to you.
Okay. This is probably part of this exercise. I'm going to have a few examples. See, I'll take what I believe. I made 25 copies. That isn't a lot of what we have. You can just take it and pass it around if people like it. Part of what we're going to do here is go through a pretty extensive list of the process that's going to be involved, and a lot of this is going to relate to managing expectations of the public in terms of timing. Give you an example, Warsaw had a bond referendum passed in early part of May. They're going to receive their first proceeds from bond sales in February. That's 10 months, and that would be probably aggressive for what we're looking at. So, I'm going to walk through a few things here, and just keep in mind that there's a number of steps and phases that we're going to go through, and each one of these steps has a lot of additional steps that I don't have included. We're going to talk about a little bit just today. So, we're in Phase 1 of implementation of the bond project process. And at your next city council meeting, you're going to certify the results of the bond referendum at your next city council meeting. One of the things we're going to talk about today, setting up the citizen-based bond support committee. Andrea's going to go over some software that we're going to install on the city's website related to gathering public input. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that same sort of thing, except on the financial side. We're also going to invest in some software to be able to get our financials out there related to these individual bond projects, where we are, how much money we spend, where the projects are, and the status, and that sort of thing. We're also currently working on an RFQ for selection of a program administrator. This is someone that's going to ride her, so to speak, over this whole process in front of us, for us, that will come from a firm that has a lot of resources, yet you could flip those off, that could be great. That has a lot of resources that we don't have in-house that can allow us to navigate and coordinate through this process. So that's Phase 1. So we're teeing a lot of stuff up, we're getting going. Still, the bond record was approved in November, we're still in November, we're making good headway. Phase 2 will be a pretty lengthy part of this process. And how we go about this is yet to be discussed. The city council will ultimately approve the priority and the phasing of the projects that they're going to undertake. There'll be a lot of work that goes into that. And then once we know the projects, we'll know what kind of design firms we need for those individual projects, so we'll be in a position to solicit qualification for design firms for the engineering design. And then we'll start a process of going, contacting the LGC, Local Government Commission, and they oversee all we do related to the bond process, and how we spend this money, and they have to be cued in, so we'll start contacting them. And then we'll solicit bids. After the construction is, after the design is complete, we'll solicit bids for the first round of projects. And there may be, there will more than likely be multiple rounds of projects, so that will be the first phase. Phase 3 is really a pretty quick phase on the scale of things, and that relates back to, ultimately, we're going to have to go to New York, if we don't do it over a conference call, to get in front of bond rating agencies to have our bond rating number rated. So that's going to be part of this process. We did that in '09 in anticipation of some revenue bonds.
And we came back with a better rate?
Then we went up there with it, that's right. So hopefully that'll happen again. That'll be part of the process. And again, LGC has a lot of, they put a lot of information together getting our bonds teed up for sale, through the Phase 3. And then Phase 4, where the rubber hits the road in terms of, city council will award the construction bids, we'll begin construction, set the property tax rate, property tax rate to be able to service the debt, and start paying our debt back. So that's, that is a long process, and again, there'll be multiple pieces of that, because we'll have more than one phase, if that makes sense. So, part of the message here to the crowd too, you know, just to manage the expectation, we're not going to be able to go out and turn dirt on these projects next month. It's going to be, it could be up to a year, depending on how quickly the, how quickly some of the things go.
We don't have to be...
No.
These don't have to go in one lifetime, or...
No, no. Some of those things will be happening concurrently.
So we could make a decision to prioritize a couple of things before we have the project manager.
You could. I think we'd want that expertise in terms of an engineer, and it makes sense to do this project first, or this phase first, but I wouldn't want to get ahead of ourselves. I think we need to be very methodical as we go through. We're going to have the, we're going to have the project manager or project administrator do more, pretty quickly, come to a place in the next month.
The long lead items may look like construction problems and pricing. And those are things that we would need to have in hand before we sell a bond.
That's correct, because we have to go to the LGC with our numbers in hand. This is what we'll call. And that's the, that's probably, that's besides construction, that is the longest phase. So, that kind of lays out the process, it's kind of real high level, there's a lot of steps with each one of these things. So, again, Warsaw, you know, just using Amity as an example, that was a 10-month process for Bam, so we're looking at at least that. Okay, so we're going to talk about two things that were in Phase 1 now. The public input software and the financial reporting software that we're going to install on the city's website. The bond referendum told me three things. The majority of the voters liked the projects that they saw. They were willing to have their taxes raised to pay for, and they trust you all to get it done. So, in, related to the trust part, we need to focus on two things. We need to focus on inclusiveness, which is what Andrea's going to go over with this software, and transparency, which is what I'm going to go over when we talk about the numbers. Being very transparent, very inclusive through this whole process. And again, investing in some software that will give us some tools that we don't currently have that will allow us to do that. So, any questions so far before we roll into Andrea's presentation?
Thanks, Lauren. So, you have your seat, or I've passed out a flyer, we'll look at it in just a moment. So just find that. But first, I wanted to show a short video that explains a web application that is being used across the country for citizen engagement, especially when it relates to particular projects. And so, in the planning world, a lot of times now, people are finding that it's hard to get people to come to a public meeting, maybe they're at the wrong time of day for some people, things like that. So, this company has tried to overcome those obstacles and provide an opportunity for people to engage online, the projects related to a bond, or maybe some other type of citizen improvement, citizen engagement project. So, let's watch the video. It takes about three minutes, and then we'll go into some more details.
We've done lots and lots of traditional public meetings, and the meetings tend to be not well-attended, they tend to be a not very diverse group of people. And the unfortunate part about that for communities, they make lots of decisions based on a very small sample size of participants.
Government doesn't usually look towards citizens for solutions. They look towards citizens to consume solutions.
Code America is a nonprofit. We even call ourselves something like Peace Corporate Geeks. What we're trying to do is help bridge the technology and the talent inside the private sector, inside City Hall, inside the public sector, try to make our governments work better for everyone.
We started MindMixer because we believe people want to contribute to their communities. They want to do it in a convenient manner, they want to do it, and believe that there's transparency involved in decision-making of their organizations. And what we found that works fantastic in government settings, we've also found that works great in business settings, and in school settings, to better engage parents, or employees, people that want to be involved in the decision-making process.
We're really passionate about finding the most interesting, promising startups, companies providing technology to cities, and giving them the support they need to scale. And this year, we launched our inaugural program, the CFA Accelerator, and out of 235 companies that applied, we selected MindMixer as one of our seven, because of the important work that they're doing to help citizens and cities connect with each other.
By having this platform, people can engage with issues that they face in their city, from sort of the comfort of their workplace or home.
MindMixer is unique in that it creates an environment where people feel empowered to be involved. And when you feel empowered to be involved, the first step that is sharing their ideas.
Some of the citizens that we have been able to engage with as a result of the platform, they commonly say things like, "I've never interacted with government before outside of paying a parking ticket or paying my taxes." And they can't believe that we're on the receiving side of this, and that we actually talk back to them.
As the process moves along, facilitates action, so the organizations that we partner with, they're committed to action.
Now, we kind of see ourselves in the position of facilitating the ability for solutions coming from citizens to be implemented, as opposed to just being solution providers ourselves. But I think on its most basic level, it's creating a positive experience for citizens.
People want to come back. They want to stay engaged with the organization, with the community.
I like to think that citizen engagement is electric. We think, we see that whenever one great activity happens, it tends to lead to more. So, we have these events, they're called hackathons, they bring together developers, build something for their community. And you think there are five, 10 people who show up, hundreds do. And this is like on the weekend, when they want to be relaxing. That's because they care. And then after that happens in one city, it tends to happen to another, and then another, and then another, and that's people there.
So there's something bigger in play. The world, our communities, our schools are facing challenges that we've never faced before. Giving people a voice to be involved, allowing them to be contributors to their communities is what's going to help us move from stagnant challenges to actionable steps. And it's important for us, when we talk to people, to ask them, "What are you doing to engage people in your community?"
So, the company is called MindMixer. Feel free to Google that, and come up on their web, go to their website, or go to these YouTube videos. That is a tool, it's a group out there that provides us with a service that is hard to duplicate in-house, and it's something that we haven't used before in a really comprehensive manner, but cities are moving forward that. So, there are a number of cities across even just North Carolina that are using it, and I'll show you those in a minute. But just go to the handout, it's an easy way to articulate what it is. But, you know, we know some things about the bond referendum. We have big, broad categories. We've had a great process through inspiring spaces to develop some of the projects, and then, of course, the Business Park evolved outside of that, but still related. And so, with those big, broad topics, then, there are still opportunities, a lot of opportunities, to have citizen input to guide this process for actually designing and rebuilding some of the amenities that are provided from those funds. So, the handout just talks in general terms about why citizens want to have a little more input, and why this tool works to provide that. So, you can just sort of see at the very top, you know, I won't read it all to you, but, you know, people see what they see on the ground, and there is a process that gets those details developed. And so, really, they're adding maybe just something as simple as park benches or a small park space to a broader greenway project. But it's really important for people to have an opportunity to weigh in on details related to a space, and that makes it more personal to them, and then when they use it, they remember that they were part of that design process. So, that's just really a sort of changing the community perception about how things get designed, is to add in the citizen involvement into that piece. And so, you can just sort of scroll down through that, that list of what, how perception becomes reality, where those decisions are made, and what the public gets a chance to provide input to. So that's just a handout, just to queue you up to the company itself. Cities enter into a contract for three years or five years for a very nominal fee, just a few hundred dollars a month, and in fact, the price is... The price is $31.50 per year for a three-year contract, and $2,275 per year for a five-year contract. So, it's online, it's a service, it's just like what you would do to enhance maybe, you know, your personal finance, you want, maybe you wouldn't pay that. But at a city level, where you're asking for all of the input for citizens, there's a, there's now a service that is handled off-site, and then we as city staff, and also a lot of the committee and council, monitor the input, and then can guide that. So let's go through what one looks like. And I just picked Wilmington, but you could look at Raleigh's website. They have one for their Parks and Recreation Bond. A number, City of Charlotte has one for their IT services. But Wilmington has one recently for a number of projects. They use it extensively. So the first thing that you see here is that it's a, it's a template at the top where you would say, you know, "We brand this related to Hickory," and then you would have, you can scroll down through. And you sign up, so it says, "Sign up through Facebook or Google+," some sort of social media sign-up. So, anonymous comments are not allowed. You do tie it back to a citizen, but you can sign up. And so then, it just allows you to pose a series of questions, and those questions are related to the projects that we decide to tackle, and in this case, and then, let's go back to the people. Right here, yeah. So, joining the conversation, that's where your, maybe your Facebook icon pops up for your account. And so, that's who's joining, that's who's conversing on that option, and then if you, the city would, scroll down a little bit. Then we've got the project in particular, and this was the North Waterfront Park in Wilmington. So they've got some photos they upload, they ask questions, and there's a description, you can scroll down, and then let's go to the row of people. Okay, so who's listening? So then you would know not only that someone in local government is paying attention to it, but actually which staff people are watching, the feedback that comes in. And it comes in back through MindMixer, but we have access to that data. And so, in this case, Dylan Lee is the Manny Pitts equivalent in Wilmington, and so, as well as a planner, two senior planners in the City of Wilmington. So that just tells you sort of how they're monitoring this particular project. And let's go to the... So I'm going to show you a particular kind of project. So this is just an example, North Waterfront Park. They've got plans for that area, they have topics on that discussion, and you can go on the web and find this site yourself, and drill down a little further. But, okay, good. So now you can, they've been asking people, "What do we, what do we need to do?" And so they put in a number of ideas. And so, these are, these are ideas that you might have, and then people vote on them, click on them, like them, it continues the conversation. And so, it can be as broad or as specific as a poll that asks you, "Do you like this, 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 or this amenity for the Riverfront Park?" Or, "Do you have ideas for streetscapes? Which streets maybe you should have the priority?" Things like that. We can develop those questions broadly or narrowly, and really drop those on. Updating the site about once or twice a week with questions to keep it active and current. And then, as we go through the process, then you can always check back in and see what the conversation is. You can find out how many days are remaining to have some feedback on a particular question. So they aren't open-ended forever, they stay open for a specific period of time, and then they close, and then you can see the conversation. But this is ideal for reaching a broader audience in Hickory. And so, we feel like it's important, now that we're moving forward with the bonds, to have a chance for people to have input. So this commute, the committee could use this tool and develop questions, and then so many more people could take their 10 minutes out of their evening, or morning, or at their lunch break at their desk, and weigh in on these topics. And we find that it's going to be exceptionally helpful. So, that's a broad brush, that happy to answer questions, or we'll come back to it again. But just look it up and check out the sites that are related to North Carolina in particular. That'll be helpful.
Following along with the trust theme, obviously this touches on the inclusiveness part of the equation. And thinking about transparency, also related building trust with the community. Obviously, our, we have a financial software package with the city that's 20 years old, and I've worked with it for 20 years, and I understand it. It's not very dynamic in terms of, one of my great pleasures in life is making city council suffer through my quarterly financial report. So, what you're going to see is a tool that will allow us to really present information that we're going to have related to the bond referendum, and also the annual budget, other financial matters that we have, in a way that is more consumable for the public. You can't get this with our static kind of finance package that we have. So this is an add-on that draws information out of our finance, financial system, and will allow us to present information on various projects related to the bond referendum, even being able to click on, click on the map and give a, give an example or a summary of what the project is, and then where you are in various stages of the project. You want to kind of walk through?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Yeah, this is the opening page, this is a demo page that we've set up with actual Hickory data. It is the current year budget for 2015. You can see on this side of the screen is the actual budget of the various categories. And on this side of the screen is the capital budget information, the currently active projects that are using capital budget dollars. This map also shows where they are located in the city for the projects that are going on. The size of the circle is indicative of the number of dollars relative to it.
And think about this as it relates to the project, the bond referendum, because this is really the main way we're going to use it out of the gate here.
Right. We'll see more in this area around the waterfront, or through downtown, wherever the streets are being upgraded or improved. You can drill down on any of these items here. For example, I can click on the government, general government information to get the next level of detail. I can click on one of these to go a little bit deeper into the budget. I can see, by clicking on this, I can go down to the landscape budget, and keep drilling down deeper and deeper until we get to some very specific information about where those dollars are going. You'll notice on the side here, there's two options. I can present the data in a bar chart, which is to follow, or I can display it in a table-type format, which allows you to scroll through it. And one other feature is the ability to download the raw data. So when you see that in a table form, you can click on the, on the button there, and it drops it right into Excel for you. And so you can retain that data and sort it, and slice it, and dice it all you want.
So you will be able to get much more transparent with the numbers, and what this tool's going to allow us to do. The folks can go online on the city's website and be able to tap into this information once the projects get up and running. And again, this is not going to be exclusive to the bonds. No, we'll use it, we can use it for the annual budget, and other capital projects that we have, in addition to that.
Yeah, this currently is the budget, and it's kind of static, it's established and adopted and approved, and that's what it's going to be for the year. This site is the site that'll be seeing some changes, because projects will change and get completed as time goes on. And you can drill down through those to get more specific as well. And we can go down to the project level, and it actually will show you on the screen where that project is occurring in the map. You can see where the finances are coming from.
Does the city staff update this, or does the provider update?
We update it as frequently as we want.
It's easy to update, you're just pulling information out, it's just all on.
It literally takes me like two minutes to update all this data. It's really easy to do. If I drill down, let's go into one that has a little different breakout on the funding. This is the radio frequency changes. You can see that we have federal revenues, we've got other financing sources, and we've got local government revenues. So you can actually see how much of it is local taxes that are going into it versus federal or state monies that you might be able to receive. It shows it over time as well. There's one other piece that I'm still working with them on getting this going, that will show the status of the project across here. Whether it's in the design phase, it's approved, it's in construction, it's completed. You know, it shows you the progress of the project and its current status. One other thing is you can also have the ability to link a specific project to a particular website. In this case, I just linked this to, actually I clicked on the wrong one, so. This is test data still, by the way. If I click on the parking deck, for example, and I go to that project... Should be getting down there. I'll go to the airport one. If I go to the airport project and see what's going on with it, and look at what's planned on this project website, I can link to a website that's outside of this product, this Socrata product, and go directly to whatever website I want relative to the project. And so, with these capital projects from the bonds, we are planning on, the significant ones, having websites set up for each of them, with before and after pictures, or conceptual drawings, or whatever it might be.
Who gets paid for the ads?
I'm sorry?
Who gets paid for the ads?
Well, this is a, this is just an airport website. These ads are relative to this particular site. So I kind of, I left our...
Are they getting those from MindMixer, or from the airport?
No. This, that was, I just said website relative to the airport. That's not our website.
Their advertising website.
Right. But there are other things we can do. If we look at the water and sewer capital budget, or this project here, I actually link that to a document in our, on our city's website, that's a PDF, and you can call that PDF up directly. Just because of the circumstances here at this place, I can't do that right now. But we can link it to any page on our, on our city's website, any document that's on that page, and then go directly to a PDF or Word document, or something of that nature.
How secure is the website?
This site is publishing public information, and so it's completely open.
Not many as far as people that can put information?
Oh, it's very tight. I'm the only one right now who has access to this data, and I'm the only one authorized to update it in any way, so.
So it'll be a powerful tool for folks that really want to drill down in the numbers, in a physical form, as well as trying to have the stats on where we are with the various projects. We'll be updating it regularly, so.
Yeah, it navigates pretty cleanly. This always gets you to the main page, and we have a little word here about the city, and gives you some details.
Yeah, if you scroll down on the map. And the, no, yeah, no, on the project, yeah, the map. So it's going to give us...
Yeah, right now, I've sent them the shape file yesterday that they will include in the map here. the map here. So it'll give us the city limits in total.
Right.
We'll be able to see the whole area basically.
Right. So for some of our projects that are, almost all of our projects, take the CityWalk, for example.
Right.
Will we be able to demonstrate that sort of geospatially?
Yes.
As opposed to just that little Google dot on the map? Do you understand my question?
Yeah, I do. And the work to actually present a more, like an aerial view or something like that would be based on the website relative to that particular project.
We just link the plan basically?
You would link it to the plan, which could be in the chat.
Exactly.
Or if you had some kind of Google map or something that you were using to give people just how it's going to look and everything?
Yeah, this particular product, Socrata, is designed to present financial information. It's not really a project status kind of website, but we will provide that project-related stuff.
Pull up the one down there, just the PDF, Mike. Let's switch from Socrata to the PDF of the mock-up of the webpage that we're working on.
Oh, right.
Because that's kind of good, what Brad's saying. So we're kind of saying, we kind of started on the Socrata piece and then showed how you can click back to, you know, project updates in as much detail as you want. But this page, did you have anything else? I'll just kind of flow through it. But this page is just a mock-up of what we see as being kind of your, let's just say your main homepage. So here you actually have the Socrata stuff that's being displayed. So if you just want to drill into financials, you can go there and you saw the mic that's displaying. Here you have the MindMixer piece, so if you want to comment on them. But you've also got one landing place that's dynamic where all of the projects, there's an overview of them and current updates, and then you can just keep drilling down as deep as you want to go. Does that make sense? So if you're here and you want to look at details, Mike showed how that happens. If you're here and want to look at details, same thing. It all is one big circle that you can find your way in and out, comment, and see the financials and everything.
You say you'll keep updated pictures of the fall during and after?
Yeah, all kinds of stuff going on, plans, you know, draft plans, minutes of committee meetings, minutes of city council meetings, I mean, basically a repository for all of the information, all the feedback that's circling around, you know, all the projects that are out there.
Is that where you see, do you see the program administrator doing that? Or do you see a staff person? And that's sort of my thing is we need somebody on staff that sort of manages this.
Yeah, I think the information will be somewhat created by the program administrator, but I think it will be filtered through staff and then updated by staff in here. We haven't gotten to quite that level of detail yet, but generally, I think that's how we see it working. Good question.
How can we make this as user-friendly as possible for people who aren't comfortable with the internet at all? And secondly, how do we make access available to people who don't have internet?
That's a great question. First of all, I think you've already got internet availability at both public libraries.
What I was thinking is could we have computers devoted to this at both libraries that are always signed on? I'm one of these gold timers, I get frustrated if I say, darn it, don't tell me to register, I already have, okay? But a way that they can go to it at any time and feel comfortable, do anything you want to with this. You don't have to worry, you're not going to mess anything up. I mean, I've thought of pretty basics here, but there are a lot of people out there in that book. And then the second thing is have an answer person. I don't think you get as many calls, I don't think you get too many calls.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is have Sarah's picture and phone number. And, well, and to your point, Mayor, I mean, yeah, we've just spent a lot of time on this, but that's not to say that all of the other channels that Mandy and Dana and Patrick have developed to communicate. I mean, we got the city snippers. Everybody that gets a water bill from the city gets that. That's a perfect place where you can give updates, phone numbers, et cetera. Community, going out and having, you know, our neighborhood meetings and stuff. I mean, I see us at certain points where, you know, there's obviously something going on or decisions are being made, that we go out to the community, we go to the civic clubs, and we go to the neighborhood groups, and we make presentations, and we just talk.
This isn't going to replace anything, it's just going to cancel.
It just keeps adding more. Now we're technology, it just keeps adding.
I don't want people frustrated because they say, other people have access to this because I'm not technologically savvy. We could also have, at least as long as there was an interest, you can have a monthly lesson in how to use your citizen-framing websites and let people come and ask questions about it, let people...
Where's Louise? Yeah, that's a perfect program for the library in hopes. I mean, we do that kind of stuff all the time anyway, you know. Great thing.
I just, I want, now, everybody under 10 is going to be able to do this, it's amazing.
Everybody who's smart.
And even I will be able to access certain parts of it. But we need... But I do think it's important that we're remembering the people who, we would love to have access to this just the way everyone else does.
Good point. I agree with you, Mayor. I heard one thing though that I want to be clear on. And as you said, we be always signed on to people to discuss this. I think it's important that if you're commenting and you're participating in the conversation, that we have an idea of who you are. Because it'd be the same if you were at a public meeting. You couldn't speak anonymously at a public meeting. I think that's just sort of the purity of process at that point.
So if you were accessing one without signing in, it wouldn't be too...
Well, yeah, you wouldn't know who it was and you could just end up with a bunch of anonymous comments and you didn't really know what to do with it.
But you just set it up so that those computers, you can't access the comments section.
Well, yeah, we're kind of getting real granular, but, you know, I mean, this site is designed to only allow comment if you log in. Now, your login, of course, is not specific to any machine. So let's say you don't have access to a computer at home, you go to one of our libraries, you go to a Parks and Rec Center where we've got kiosks in effect set up like you're talking about, Mayor. You can sit in it, you can sign in as yourself, and you can comment all day long. But yeah, it really, it really does not allow for just anonymous public comment. And if you think about it, we really have evolved past that. I mean, Hickory Daily Record, you have to log in if you're going to leave a comment on a story. You know, people need to know who you are.
Well, there are two ways it will also work for the person calling in, who they're speaking to, be it Sarah, the mayor.
Sure, yep.
That gets back to who's listening. And the other side of this, once the person, once the citizenry has signed up in this, we can also poll them. We can send and broadcast an email to them and say, hey, we're thinking about doing this, what are your thoughts? And invite them to come on and respond.
You put a comment on such and such on the Riverfront. The plan just came back, take a look at it, see what you think, you know. Yeah, so it's two-way, right. Take a look at it.
This is a push and pull ride comment. It's been going into or it's going back.
You sign up and you were commenting on one, then you'll get a message back saying, okay, we just updated that site, the latest version is out there, go check it out.
And we've seen on a lot of, some of the examples where it's being used, where somebody will send in an idea and the people who are listening will reply right away and say, that's a great idea, you know, maybe we can also do this in addition to that, or, you know, they'll embellish some...
And other citizens.
Right, and other citizens do.
You know, I mean, somebody puts an idea and two other citizens say, that's a great idea, and I saw this over here at that place, or, you know, whatever. And they can feed off of each other's ideas.
Is it going to be a chat room?
Not, technically it's not a chat room, but in effect, that's what takes place when you opine off of each other's ideas, yeah.
Looks a lot like Facebook, Mark. We could, anybody post pictures or...
Yeah, you can, if you see, if you're in another town and you see a great feature of the park or something, you can take a picture and say, I saw this at this other park. You know, somebody, can we do something like that? So it's really very flexible.
At the end of the day though, council still has to make that core government decision I learned my first year on council, is decision-making is balancing a limited amount of fiscal resources against an infinite number of needs. I mean, you know, so it will have a lot of great ideas, but at some point we'll have to make some decisions.
Well, and that's really, that's really a perfect segue to this next part of the discussion. Did you hear this? No, please shut that down. So let's go from there into the conversation about, that's really super broad citizen engagement input. Now you're even getting a little bit narrower in the discussion of a committee, okay? And what I've handed out to you is just, is simply, since November 4th, we've had a lot of discussion with city staff, next step forward. I mean, you've already heard some of that work that's gone on. This is just us boiling down the ideas that we have had as a place for you all to start and discuss about the committee, okay? So let's start exactly where Councilman Lael was going. Before you can even really talk about your committee, you've got to understand what is your role as city council. And I think it's important for the citizens, the community to understand that as well, that you all, you all by law are the decision-makers and you cannot delegate that. So when you talk about approving budgets, design contracts and concepts, construction contracts, timing of the amount of the bond issuance, appropriating bond funds, approving expenditures, all of that has to reside with city council. And I know you all know that, but I think it's important for the community to understand, you cannot hand that to a committee. You can't hand that to staff. You all have to do that. That's your responsibility. So then that kind of brings us to, okay, well then what do you need and what is the role of a citizen committee? And again, by nature of your responsibility as decision-makers, it's advisory, that their role is to give you feedback, to give you input. So what I've done is just tried to kind of start figuring out, okay, how does that look for a committee? You know, kind of some bullets of what their job description would look like. And I've got their, and this is not supposed to be, you know, all-inclusive, it's just, again, our thoughts and staff to give you all the place to start from, but review and focus that broad community input. So you're going to get tons of community input put on the software system and otherwise. That committee is a great venue to start taking that and narrowing it, focusing it, pulling pieces together to make sense. Bringing simply their knowledge of the community into that discussion, okay? And I'm going to come back and touch on that in a second. And feel free to stop, comment, whatever, as we go along. I think one of their key roles is to communicate accurate information to the community. So you're basically, committee members are going to be like super-educated citizens because they're in meetings and they're hearing it, they're involved in seeing it, so that when they're at church or the grocery store, wherever else, you know, they can be good conduits of, oh yeah, here's where we are with X, Y, Z. I just got an update on that, or whatever, and really be a good conduit out to the community. And then a really big role in providing feedback. So as Andrea, I think, mentioned, you know, there's going to be lots of design work that has to be done. The committee is a great place, again, to take the broad community input, to talk to the staff and to the designers, to refine those plans and those concepts, so that you're getting that community feedback before it's coming to you, okay? Before you have to make those final decisions. You know, you've touched a lot of bases, a lot of people have looked at these, and a lot of ideas have gone into it. At a high level, I think they can give you great feedback on budgets and priorities and timing. You know, you've got $40 million worth of it over 10 years. If the designs are coming in and one project is looking like it's going to take up half of the budget, that committee would be a good place to say, ooh, I don't know, that may be a little high, you know? Give you that kind of feedback as a city council to say, wow, you know, that's going to have to pull money from other places, you know, maybe we need to tweak that design and scale it back, or whatever those cases may be. Same with the expenditure piece, the budget and expenditure kind of go together there, the timing of things. Provide broad community perspective. You know, it's easy for us in City Hall to get very myopic. This is what we do for a living. We understand things a certain way, we understand the language of local government. You know, it's really great when you're bringing other people into those discussions because you're getting perspectives that you're not going to get otherwise. And then really the whole communicating piece, you know, to be a sounding board and to provide input and advice on how are we communicating this? Are we doing a good job? You know, is there things, just like the Meridade, in effect? Are there things we're missing in the way we're communicating? If we're missing out with people who don't have internet access, we need to understand that. We need to get ideas on, well, how can we address that? And also the branding piece of it, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about it in a second, but my feeling, staff's feeling is, you know, with the positive bond referendum, you've got this great momentum to say out to the community, and I mean within the Hickory community, but also meaning to those businesses and people that we're interested in attracting here, a message of, wow, this community is going to invest $40 million in itself, there are great things going on here, come and see, come and be part of this. Whether that's Scott Millar attracting people to 1764, or, you know, various commercial realtors trying to move properties along the CityWalk, you know, all of those things, I think we as a city need to have a really good message, a branded message in effect that we're communicating internally with our residents and externally. And I think, I think your citizen committee can be a great place, you know, again, to hear drafts, to hear ideas, and then react to it and say, well, we like this, we don't like that, you should tweak this, you should tweak that. Does that make sense? And to keep refining it over time. So then we start getting into some of the... Any other thoughts or ideas on kind of that job description again? This is staff's thoughts and ideas, just giving you all a place to start from. Anything glaring that we're missing there? Is that generally consistent with what you have been thinking a committee should be Size and makeup. We feel like it's important that the committee is very reflective of the community. We've had a lot of discussion about, we've got this great committee that did the Inspiring Spaces work. Do you continue on with those folks if they want to? Obviously, people always have the option of dropping out of things if they kind of feel like, hey, I did my work, I've got other things I'm moving on to. Bottom line is, we feel like to get, you know, as broad a group as you would like, and it's just us thinking, that you probably have got a pretty big committee, probably 25 to 30 people, which is a little different than things that we've done in the past. In the past, we've been much more in the 10, 15 range. But when you think about how these projects are all over the city and, you know, how you all will want to have lots of different people involved in those discussions, that's been our thing. Frequency, something we learned in the Inspiring Spaces work, was that you've got to have time in between meetings for the staff and for the professionals to actually do some work, so that they're coming back to the committee and they've got stuff. If you're meeting too frequently, I think, A, you'll burn your committee members out. These are going to be people who are busy, have got jobs, things going on. And your meetings may not be as effective because you just have not had time to get designs done and work done that you really need to be bringing back to the committee at some point in time. So our thought, again, has been maybe you set them up as quarterly, and those are placeholders, and then, you know, as the work is done and you need the committee to meet, you're pulling them in to kind of know, once a quarter is when they get together and review what's going on. In terms of the scope, so taking number one, you know, what do you need from the citizens, from the committee and that list, and what are you going to apply that list to? As I've, as I've really thought a lot about this, I've kind of decided in my own thinking that you kind of got two different, two different types of projects here. You've got the purely community asset projects of your Riverwalk, your CityWalk, and all your gateways, wayfinding, streetscapes. Those are things that every single one of us and people who aren't even in the city are going to use, okay? 1764, though, the business park, I think, is different. So on the community, on the real, what I would consider true public assets, you want tons and tons of community involvement. When you start talking about building a business park, I'm not so sure. I think in that regard, you've got much more of a specialized thing that you're trying to do. Even a business park is specialized, but you're going to even be more specialized within that, because you're going to want a business park that's going to be a certain type of business park. And you're going to have to be very in tune with what are the amenities in a business park that are going to attract the companies that we're looking for there. You've got already a joint venture with the county, so you're going to have city council and the county commissioners who have to jointly make decisions on that park. You've got your EDC board and your staff who will obviously be leading and they'll be bringing to you all the plans. And you have the potential, you know, of other business parks and opportunities that come along in the next 10 years that today, we don't even know what those are. So my thinking has been that from the 1764 park standpoint, the relationship with the citizens committee is more just updates. I just don't think you'll be nimble enough and be able to make crisp, quick decisions and stay in time with recruiting industries. and stay in time with recruiting industry. You know, if there's a sense of, well, we gotta pull the committee together and they've gotta review everything, and then it's gotta come to city council, I think you all are gonna have to play that role, and the county commissioners will have to play that role on 1764. And I would see, I would see the citizen committee of getting updates from Scott Millar at their quarterly meeting, simply saying, here's where we are, here's what's going on. But them not having as much of a role in the community involvement, because it is a specialized asset, and, again, the city council and county commissioners and the decision makers on it, does that make sense? And then we've, we've kicked out around a lot of staff, and that's kind of where we've ended up. That feels like what we're gonna need to do to be successful.
Yeah, I don't want another layer of that.
Right.
On what we need from the committee, I think there's one critical piece that this committee could evolve themselves in. And that is, how do we leverage these public dollars with private ones?
Yeah, I actually left that off and forgot to add it. I think that's a great discussion that needs to take place, is the whole fundraising piece of it, is that's what you're talking about?
Yeah, 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 right. Making opportunities.
Right. I guess, Brad, we've kind of almost come to the mindset of, okay, do you really ask your whole committee to do that? Or does a subset of the committee and maybe other people become almost like a community foundation that is constantly looking to raise dollars? And the reason we thought that was, we were concerned that if one of the banner things that you said of your citizen committee is to do fundraising, that you're gonna have maybe a lot of otherwise really good people say, you know, I'm just not a fundraiser and I'm not in those circles, and so I don't wanna serve on it? Again, that's just us talking. Me talking counts.
I would agree with that, just because there are certain boards that you, people sit on, and the expectation is that you are going to do fundraising. It does get some people paused that that's not, there's three things that they don't like.
So that's just my reaction, is that you probably have a subset of the committee that works with maybe another group of folks who really are in the fundraising mode, that's what they do, and there's cross-pollination between the two, but if you're on the committee and, you know, and you're not in those circles, you don't feel intimidated by the fact that, oh my goodness, I'm supposed to be helping raise X amount of dollars to fund, you know, whatever on the River Walk or whatever, that's just trying to be inclusive and...
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I get that, but I think that, I don't know, I wouldn't see that, I don't think we pass the community with fundraising. So I think we, the community should provide guidance on opportunities.
Oh, yeah, okay, I got you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so more a sense of, hey, we can make a connection with this company.
Exactly. This makes sense, they, you know...
And then maybe they talk about, who would be good to go make the ask?
Well, whatever, right, yeah, or they pass it on to you.
And some of these things just come automatically, when you're in the development stage, there are people that see the opportunity, which is, we then get involved with them, you know, rather than going out and saying, oh, by the way, you wanna contribute to this program? They say, oh, I like that development that's happening, and I would like to be a part of that. So sometimes, it just happens, without us knocking on doors.
That's a, that's a great point.
Just along the line with the money, the program administrator slash park manager, is there gonna be any, is that empty, will they grant savvy?
They will certainly have that.
Yes.
That'll be part of our...
Yep. Yep, that's right. That's part of what they can bring to the equation. So then I guess we're down to structure. We do feel like it needs to be somewhat formal, there needs to be rules, a chair, attendance requirements. I mean, we see that, you know, we're talking about a decade's worth of work, we're talking about a committee that's gonna be working for 10 years, maybe a little longer. I mean, if we're borrowing in year eight or seven, those projects are gonna be built over, you know, beyond 10 years, potentially.
We can't really expect the same people to stay up for 10 years.
Right, and that's why I think you got this membership rotation, and, and these are purely things I just pulled up out of the air. I thought, do you have them in four-year staggered terms? Maybe, maybe four years is a long time, four times two is eight. You know, maybe you have it three-year staggered terms, and a person could serve for two, three-year terms, six years, that's a pretty significant commitment. I think you do want them staggered, you don't want your whole committee going out and then a whole new committee coming in to start over again, so you got them rotating. And that way, over the course of 10 years, you know, if you got a committee of 30, and it turns over, you know, you've had 60, at least 60, you'll have people coming and going because they move and different things happen. You got potential of having 70, 80 people who served on that committee in that period of time, that's pretty solid. Again, this is just our thing. Hold on just a second, Lisa, let's, as the mayor said, we'll, we'll take kind of comments and discussion at the end of your report. And then I've already talked about the branding piece, so I think one of the first things that we've gotta wrap our heads around is what do we call this? Getting that good, tight, crisp, and, you know, I've had different discussions with you all and with others. Inspiring Spaces had good traction, that's out there, a lot of money was spent on boost to get that out there, but that was more of a campaign thing, I think that would have to be migrated to be something a little different, if you wanna keep using the term boost. We've got great traction with Life Well Crafted, we fill in the blank, we call it something else well crafted. We just think it's important to have that good message that we all are into and works, that, you know, again, we want realtors, I've already had realtors call me and ask, can I tell people about the River Walk and the City Walk? I mean, you know, you want that message going out all over the community of what the investments of $40 million are gonna do to this city to attract people, and that's what this whole thing's about. And we can provide them, whether they're realtors or whoever, the media, that, you know, nice, packaged-up message, it'll make the traction. And I don't know what the answer to that is today, I think that's one of the things you all or maybe the committee needs to work on pretty quickly, to decide, you know, what do you wanna call it?
How soon do we need to let you?
Well, so, yeah, what I would suggest is, next steps, if you all are, you know, 80% comfortable with this, we can put together a draft resolution to bring to you all, so you could actually create a committee by resolution. That gives it, Arnie and Sarah have done some work on some kind of rules and bylaw type of stuff, showing me to do a little more fleshing out on that, to bring you something more formal and tangible for you all to react to and potentially adopt. We've received, Sarah, I don't know how many, how many books have...
I think we're actually at a 50 now.
Yeah, so we're, we're in the 50, 60 range. I think you still need to push that for a little while longer, I mean, that's just come through the email blast that I sent out, I think you probably need some more media coverage. I think you needed to keep throwing that net out there for people who are interested in serving for probably another month or so. Push that out there so that no one feels like they had an interest in serving, but they missed the window, or they didn't get an email from me and they didn't know they could, or whatever, if you want.
Could you just be a soft one, just the opportunity to...
Yeah, what have we had in snippets so far on it, Dana?
I think it's going through the December, so I haven't...
December snippets? Does it have the form where you can go sign up and stuff online?
Yeah, it tells them where to go.
Yeah.
And the...
So I think what would be great is if, you know, at the beginning of the year, if you all had, you know, everybody who's expressed interest, and then you can start looking at that, even about, you know, being representative of the community and being inclusive, you know, looking at that community and starting to have some conversation about who to start in that first, first laser. And you could have already adopted the resolution, established the structure, and then come back for January 10th, and actually appoint you for it.
You know, it's my opinion, just an opinion, that council ought to take the task, the job of making, or, you know, creating the brand for what this is. I think then we can be nice and clean, bucked up, and the resolution can say what that committee is, and it needs to go to ordinance that can say what that committee is. But then, and then when people come on, they know what they're, what they're doing and what the name of that group is. I, I, I think people understand it sort of, you know, in a big way, or they have to say, you know, whose resonates with them, or Inspiring Spaces, or whatever, but I think it's our job to, to give back to, to take it.
I think that's a great point, too, because I think it also sends the message to the community that, look, we are the city council, we are the ultimate decision makers, we want, need your help, here's your vehicle. You've got your rules, you've got your, you've got your job description, you've got your name, go to work. Yeah, I think that does send a good message of how connected they are to you all, how much y'all care about it, and that you've given them some structure or framework within the work. And the name says a lot about that.
I think so. And I think it's more than the name, I mean, it's not wholly more than the name, but it's, but there's some graphic elements associated with it, that it's consistent across, you know, websites, printed materials, or whatever. And we don't have anybody, staff, that's capable of that, I mean...
Not good.
Not yet, well...
We try stick figures around some of these stuff, although that's because it's pretty cool stuff.
So we might need to have, get some help with that.
Innovation well crafted. If it's a proposal, it's all...
I think Hickory needs to be... I tend to like the 3-3, more than 4-4 terms.
Yeah, 3-3 or 2-3 terms?
Yeah. 4 is 2.
Yeah, gives you more opportunity to cycle people, and four years happens a long time, you know?
Let the, let the people be volunteer choose. The first group's gonna have some one years, and two years, and three years, right? How do we do that? I mean, or do we wanna say, everybody's got a three-year term, and then some have three plus one, some have three plus two, some have three plus three? Oh, yes, Mike wrote it, I'm sorry. But I'm just...
Something like that, yes.
But I like it if you give them the opportunity to choose what term they want, first of all. And then if not enough people choose what term they want, make it work out, then you have a random drawing out of a hat. Rather than somebody else deciding, we want you to be a six-year person, we want you to be a five-year person. Because every person on this committee is equally important. But that's Mike.
Any other thoughts, discussion on that? I'm walking out here with a sense of consensus that you want us to take this list and generate a resolution. I'm not sure how to...
I mean, I think this is a great starting point, and I think it addresses a lot of things that we would have probably come up with, had y'all not already come up with it. And it's a very cool course for you to go forward.
I'm a little, I'm with you, Brad, but I don't know exactly how to go forward on the name and the brand piece, other than us, and getting five or six things and throwing it to y'all and letting y'all tweak it, unless y'all want us to hire somebody to do it, and we certainly, I certainly feel like it rises to that level, but that, you know, and then you gotta kind of go through a process in terms of who to hire and...
North Star did the Life Well Crafted, Rob.
They did.
Could they just jump in and do this as an adjunct, I mean, potentially? They know us.
Yes, they could, that's a great question.
And tagging on the craftsmanship would not be a bad idea, somehow or another. I agree with you about what Hickory...
I mean, this is a continuation of Hickory Well Crafted.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Is this not, this is our final big thing now?
Yeah.
So let's complete Hickory Well Crafted.
Would y'all be comfortable with that? I mean, that would be, that would be an easy, quick thing for us to do with the group that already has done a ton of research on us and knows us well, and frankly, our branding has been so successful, they've been using us to promote their services all over the country.
Well, and, and other entities in the area have, have jumped on, so I think it only helps, and I...
Hickory Well Crafted. It works.
Okay, well, we'll do some, we'll do some work on that.
Maybe they would like this best in us to keep their model going.
Okay, last thing on your agenda is to ask Scott Mitchell to come up, and we had it on your agenda Tuesday night, but because of weather, we're not able to really have the information. I don't think Scott's ready for you to take action today, but he does wanna give you an update on where we are with the parking deck.
What's the procedure, you want me up there, or here?
Yeah, I want you to stand up there where I was, Scott, just tell them what's going on, and let them hammer you into the ground.
All right, to refresh everybody's memory, when we started the parking deck, we chose to do a pre-cast parking deck, and this is kind of a meagre situation in a public bid job. Construction documents have to be generic enough that you open it to anybody that wants to bid it. So the foundation design is totally dependent upon the pre-cast contractor that you get. So now we've got the pre-cast contractor, Timbo, out of Greenville, and we've got deep foundations, because of the inconsistency of the soil. So once the pre-cast design drawings come in, we design the foundations. They're pretty much where we thought. Good news is, we're way under budget, but the bad news is, we gotta come back for a change order for the foundations. And what we chose to do was did the foundation, we got piles, that are essentially a screw that goes into the ground, build the concrete. That's by far the cheapest way to do it, and the most least damage to the commission center as well in driving, but it's a very solid, not noisy operation. We've done several tests at this point, we tested two piles, we've come up with the design numbers for the foundations, and the bid documents were based on 65-foot pile there. We've got about four, they're driving some today, we've got about four to six piles this way, and we're probably averaging 80. Now, the best thing to do is to be conservative, because you're always gonna pay more than what you get back. In other words, we've got unit prices listed on the contract forms, so we have a fixed amount in the contract, it's just a matter of establishing lineal footage. And you pay $60 a lineal foot more, but you only get back 40. So we were conservative with the bid documents. The original budget for the parking deck was 3.26. The bid documents under contract is 2.57, so we've got a lot of leeway. We anticipated about 200,000 in the foundation, and I think the TDA is budgeting 3 million. But right now, as of today, we think it's gonna be in the 150 to 160 territory, that we have to come back for a change order. Now, that, that in itself is a dilemma, we're gonna talk that out, but the foundation contractor's gonna want some assurances when he gets to the contractor's mouth, that he's gonna get his change order. But I came to find the change order till we get the piles finalized. So we're probably, just thinking through it, maybe a letter of intent or something we wanna get to that point, that we'd have to bring to council, to keep the pile contractor on site. Definitely opens the suggestions there, but it's kind of a catch-22. The good news is, we're under budget.
Are they looking at the document that we invited, is that the...
That's probably what they would want, for their sake. Now, again, we've got a third-party testing firm, it's local, Toddler Valley Testing, is measuring each one of the piles, so we know we're getting straight answers out of them. We'll probably get to that point in December, first of January, so whatever council meetings close to that point. But, and they may, they may not ask for that, I'm just anticipating, want to give you an update. It may, we can put their responsibility on Matthews Construction, you know, if we're hard-nosed about it, they would do it if there is. But I would anticipate they wouldn't want to do that. Is that clear as dirt? Clear as poor soil? Yeah, the, the original soil tests were so inconsistent, you hit the original ground someplace from 15 feet, some places went to 100 feet, so we just had to take an average, that's all we could do. And luckily, it's, it's right where we thought it would be, so it's no surprise, it's just a matter of... It's just a matter of...
The TDA has a contingency of 443,000?
Yeah, they're anticipating BBC to make sure, but they were anticipating barring pretty big, which the contract amount is 2.576. So even worse case, we're going to be well under that budget now. Any questions?
So we'll need to come back to you all. Scott, when do you anticipate having the final...
If we stay on schedule, we don't get too much rain somewhere around the end of December, first of January, we'll have, we'll be close to the end of foundation design.
So that third-party engineer is actually certifying the length of each of the piles?
Each of the piles.
And the fact that it's bearing on solid earth or whatever the appropriate pressures?
That's correct, yep. It's really, if they're, you know, they're working for the city.
Right, right.
So they're a third-party, it's up to them to verify the numbers.
And they will give us a document?
They will.
They will say so, yeah. I mean, that's a, you know, clearly we've got to have it resting on solid earth. I think there's no doubt of that.
So that's just information so y'all understand what's going on and then we'll be back to you with the appropriate change order deal with it.
Yep.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay. There, that's all we got for you all.
Well, we said we have it to 1:30 if you want to stay. And we said we had a little now, we would entertain questions or comments from the audience. So we're going to give you a few minutes now to do so if you'd like.
Be careful.
Be careful. Well, I take it that, Barry, you ought to just absolutely answer every question that anyone has.
I think it's we called everybody and told them what we were doing and said, "Come out and support."
Well, maybe it's just that we don't quite understand what our questions might be yet,
I didn't want you planting that in their heads.
It's already in mine.
Folks, thank you all for being here. We appreciate your interest and commitment to innovating Hickory Well Crafted.